And our requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website. And for this meeting, members of the public wish to listen or watch the meeting made use in the following manner. Live streaming, educational channel Verizon 29 and Charter Channel 194. No in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can actively access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video reporting transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So we'll move right into the agenda. And we are going to be discussing the FY 21 school committee approved budget.
So I'll provide some context. So obviously there are many impacts that COVID-19 have created on our educational community, whether it's remote learning, students learning from home, educators working from home. And there's also some financial impacts as we look to FY 21. One thing that is clear as we look to fiscal year 21 is that there are a lot of unknowns in terms of economic outlook. Although the school committee did vote a school committee approved budget earlier this year. We've worked closely in collaboration with our town administrator, John Kader. I'm looking at the economic outlook of the community, looking at revenue forecast at the state level and the local level. And Mr. Kader has asked the school committee to revisit the school committee voted budget and move forward with a 1% amended budget. So the leadership team pre-K through eight has been working over the past many weeks on looking at different scenarios. The scenarios have ranged from a 0% or level funded budget all the way to a 2% budget. And to really think about what reductions could be made to meet those targets. So we started at two and then a one and then a zero. When we, as a leadership team, looked at those reductions, we used criteria to make decisions about what reductions we would consider. And the first criterion that we really considered were things over people. So we looked at all of our line items closely again. And our principals and district leadership team looked to make reductions in line items. So purchasing of science supplies and so forth. So that was the first criteria. The next criterion was really looking at not eliminating programs. So when there are very difficult budget seasons or times, if you eliminate complete programs in future years, it's very difficult to restore those programs. So we, we tried to protect our programs. And the third criterion we used was really to, to maintain and as many positions and impact employees as less as possible in terms of looking at enough by 21 budget. So maintaining staffing levels to support the work in our schools was, was a criterion. And then lastly, the last criterion was to really look at making sure that whatever reductions were considered had the least impact of to our students and their educational experience. So again, those reductions or those, the criteria were, were used in that order. So first we looked at line items. Second, we looked at trying to maintain programs. And then the highest priority was trying to maintain staffing to support the work that we do. As we look to the future in terms of the state budget, the Charlie Baker released his, his budget in late January. Since then, obviously with the COVID-19 health situation, much has changed in terms of the economic outlook across the state. The budget process at the state level has been restarted and they're actually starting from base zero. Again, and they're waiting for more clear data and indicators of what the financial impact will be across the Commonwealth. There's not a lot of great information around what impact COVID-19 will have on revenue projections at the state level. However, some of the revenue projections that have been discussed are are dire and do not look optimistic. At the local level, so town administrator Kader is relooking at economic climate in Northborough, looking at revenue projections and again, trying to be realistic in terms of moving forward on FY 21 budget that can be sustained next year. So this evening or this afternoon, I'll be presenting to the school committee, school superintendent's recommended amended FY 21 budget for discussion. And we'll talk about the details and the impact of a 1% budget and on our, on our overall program. So again, when we start the budget process and I'm going to start from square one in terms of presenting the budget to the committee and the community to talk about the process we've used and the changes that we've made. Obviously, the vision and mission of our school district is at the forefront of the decisions we make around budgeting and really guide our work. So in terms of the budget process, the budget process starts early in the fall, in September. And we've had a pretty typical September, October and November. And for the most part, December in terms of the budget process. And then in January, we had a school committee voted FY 21 budget. Obviously, since then, much has happened in terms of the economic climate with COVID-19. And we went back to the drawing board to look at trying to reach a target of a 1% budget. So really where we are today is presenting that work to the school committee for discussion and it will be the will of the committee to vote that, that budget or approve that budget. After this afternoon's meeting, the next step in the process is to move that budget forward at the annual town meeting, which currently is scheduled for, I believe, May 27th. But there's some conversations that that might, that most likely will be, that day will be changed to, I believe, in the third week in June, I believe, June 22nd. But I don't think that has been officially announced. So one of the important, some of the important work that the school committee does every year is really to talk about budget goals. And the budget goals really guide the budget process throughout the budget season. And I just highlighted two of the areas that really have helped as we've looked at a 1% budget. And really they're aligned, aligned with the criteria that we discussed. The first is to maintain and support high quality staff and instructional programs and support class student teacher ratios in accordance with the class size policy I-240. And then second is meet the needs of all learners with instructional classroom models that are research based and reflect best practices. So again, some of the continued budget goals, you know, we maintain district capital assets. Emphasis, emphasis on safety and energy, aligning programs with the curriculum frameworks at the state level. Meet state benchmarks and district educational technology and funding goals. And lastly, a major initiative of the, the school committee has been to implement the transition plan to a, a tuition free full day kindergarten program and will be entering into year two. So as we looked at the fiscal year 2021, there were a lot of unknowns at the time. We had chapter 70 funding and new legislation. So we weren't, we were unsure at the Student Opportunity Act and additional funding that we might receive as a result. This, this is actually a new variable. We thought we knew what our chapter 70 funding was with the governor's release of the budget. However, this is now unknown and we're anticipating a anywhere between a 15 to 20% reduction in chapter 70 funding for the town of Northborough. However, we don't know that number yet and that is just conjecture at this point. Another budget variable is legal services renewal. So we actually have a better understanding of what that will look like. Transportation was an unknown and we actually now have that number. So that is built into this 1% budget. And lastly, a new variable is the COVID-19 health situation and what the economic outlook will look like for our town and at the state level and how that will impact the fiscal year 21 Northborough School Committee budget. So just a quick overview of, of the budget process. So the each row is an iteration of the budget and where we started. So again, we began this process in October. We find our October budget and created a preliminary budget, which was presented to the school committee. And from that preliminary budget, we made some shifts and adjustments. And again, in January, we landed on a school committee voted budget of $25,714,417 or a 3.15% increase over fiscal year 20. So this evening, this afternoon, I am recommending to the school committee an amended budget, which is $25,177,844, which represents a 1% increase over FY 20 and represents a $249,286 increase, which is a reduction of $536,573 over the school committee voted budget. So, so what were some of the budget reductions? So just an explanation of, of this table. In the first row, in the first section, special education program. So whatever, whatever is in gray were reductions that were made to create the school committee voted budget. What's in red in each row is the additional reductions to get to the 1%. So I'm going to ask Becky Pelgrino to give some details around these additional reductions that were, were identified.
So as you can see, in the special education programming section, the student support services department did take a look at their line items and they were able to find an additional $5,000 in reductions in their line items. And then we also were able to capture some $50,000 that we will use from the FY 20 budget to prepay our out of district tuitions as allowed by state law. So that's a, one way that we could offset this year's budget. We've also asked, and we worked very closely with the administrators and the directors and asked them to look at all of their line items. And you can see that they were able to capture an additional $34,875 in their individual line items. And that could include, you know, supplies, professional development, like their own personal professional development, a variety of different areas were, were chosen. And then finally, and this is the, the biggest number and the toughest number, and this would be the additional staff shifts and also reductions. So we had a number of staff movements that occurred after the budget actually was passed or approved by the school committee. And so we have tried to minimize our existing staff as much as possible by really being able to kind of take advantage of those, those movements and either not backfill positions or capture the savings of hiring at a reduced salary. However, there are some reductions that will be occurring in this budget. And there are three. And again, the same thing, the red are the new reductions and the gray and black numbers are what was approved in the previous budget. So for educators, we have three FTE. And that is a combination of two positions and then five positions that will be reduced by point two FTE. We have additional ESP. So we have an additional two ESPs. And then again, we have four positions that will be reduced by point three FTE. And then finally, we have one additional position in this again, is a staff restructure where there was a retirement and we will not be backfilling a position that is being used to fill in for the retiring person. So in total, those budget offsets are $648,316.
So just to comment on line items and staffing. So obviously we are human resources. Where a people organize, organization, a majority of our budget is around human resources. So when we're looking at reducing the budget to the level that a 1% budget is, it's very difficult not to start talking about positions. Again, just by the nature of the work that we do, it's a, it's a people organization. It's a, it's a, it's an organization that requires people to do the work. So just some budget drivers. So when we looked at the, this academic year, just a couple of budget drivers or a few budget drivers that existed. First, increased costs of special education placements. So again, students who need out of district services to meet their needs. We saw a $163,879 increase. We also, budget drivers, an upgrade to student information system. So again, we're currently using in our three districts, Northborough, Southborough, the regional, a student information system that was is over 20 years old and end of life is, is clear in terms of the current company and where it's headed. So we are making a shift in student information systems and upgrading our, our system. Northborough's portion of that upgrade is $22,236. We had digital resources. So our mathematics curriculum, digital curriculum materials and, and physical materials needed to be renewed. So that's an increase of $25,067 and that was pre-K through eight. And we did have an additional line and a reduction of $1,800 to that, to our resources. And then lastly, contractual obligations and line item increases totaled $474,677. And those are, again, the cost of living increases, insurance increases and so forth. And lastly is implementing year two of tuition free kindergarten, which was a $100,000 budget driver. So really this afternoon's budget reflects for the most part, a level funded budget with some growth areas and a few line items. So for the most part, it's, it's a very very conservative budget. It's not ideal in terms of what we were hoping to accomplish in fiscal year 21. But again, the economic outlook has changed. So I'm recommending an amended FY 21 budget of $25,177,844, which again is an increase of $249,286, which is an increase of 1% over FY 20. And then just to kind of revisit some of the growth areas in this budget. Remain year two, implementing tuition free full day kindergarten, upgrading our student information system. Add our 3.31, 3.15% budget instructional resources was a growth area. However, this, with a 1% budget is no longer growth area. And then lastly, translation services. So in the budget, there are additional funds to support the translation services that were required to do for our families. So I also wanted to revisit the plan for transitioning to tuition free full day kindergarten. What's highlighted in yellow, the yellow row is what the plan is for implementing year two of the plan. And does have a reduction of $500 in tuition to our families from $3,000 to $2,500. But again, this, this is up for discussion based on what our revenue projections are for the revolving account in kindergarten. So at this point, that is the superintendent's amended FY 21 budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the proposal.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I have a question, Greg. The previous slide where you talked about the transitioning of the full day kindergarten program, you talked about that you wanted to have discussion about that. Did you want?
One of the, so we, one of the conversations we had was not making a decision around the tuition reduction amount until we had a better sense of where our budgets were falling. So for example, when we communicated to our, our K parents, the tuition amount in FY 19, in the summer or in, and during registration, we used the full amount, $3,250. And in August, we made a decision or the committee made a decision to continue with a reduction of $250. And we notified families that there was a $250 reduction to K tuition based on the implementation of the plan. My recommendation to the school committee is to do the same, have the same strategy that we're communicating that tuition for FY 21 will be $3,000. And we can reevaluate the fiscal landscape and revenue projections for kindergarten and make a reduction at that time. I'm confident that we will have a reduction in tuition. It's just a matter of how much will it be? You know, for example, it could be anywhere in between the $3,000 and $2,500 range.
And when do you see that timing of that happening as that notification, does that go out? After, after they've made the decision to sign up for full day K or does it go out?
We would communicate the tuition for FY 21 is $3,000. And then typically in July or early August, we would communicate the reduction of tuition based on, again, the economic outlook.
So then as a follow up question, Sue, through the chair. Thank you. So is the budget you're presenting then today does not have the reduction of $500, $500 per pupil? We're staying with the $3,000 amount in this 1% budget?
Correct. So, so right now, when we're looking at some of the, the financial impacts of COVID-19 that we presented to the school committee, one of the decisions the school committee made was to reimburse or to reimburse families who paid tuition a certain percentage of their tuition because students, again, were not attending the kindergarten program. So that has had a negative impact on our budget projections. And therefore has shifted our five year tuition free full day kindergarten plan.
So would we have to, since we're going to keep it at 3,000 sometime between now and September, you're thinking depending on the financial climate that we may reduce that. Would we have to meet as, as a K to A committee and vote that in? And would we, does that also, two point question, two part question, would we have to amend the budget again?
No, because this, and Becky, you can, you can feel free to join in, but just because it's a revolving account, you would not, it's, it does not impact the operational budget, which you're voting this evening. What it would mean is that Becky and I would provide you with some scenarios with better data in early July for the school committee to make a decision around what the reduction would be in terms of tuition.
So we would not have to amend any budgets then because it's in the revolving account?
Correct.
Exactly.
Okay. Can I, Sue, can I have another question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Cause if somebody else has one, I would, I can save mine. Because this budget that we're looking at is impacting, you know, what's going to happen in the fall. And I know that there's a group of 25 professionals that are meeting with the governor and coming up with what the climate and the scope of the schools and classrooms are going to look like in the fall. Have you heard anything from the state about what we could be facing or what are the expectations for fall teaching?
So we, we have no definitive answers in terms of what the fall will look like. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has formed a working group to actually define and create some parameters around opening in the fall. We are waiting for May 18th Governor Baker's announcement around what reopening might look like and what that phase and approach would be. So we don't have any definitive answers at this point. As a district though, we are trying to be proactive and we are forming our own task force to talk about the various scenarios that could exist from, you know, returning to some sense of normalcy in the fall. That could be a scenario or, or continuing with the remote learning in any scenario in between. So we're, we're going to be planful and mindful of what could be and will be prepared for, to react to whatever scenario exists.
Do you have a question? Oh, John.
Go ahead, Kelly.
It's kind of along those lines. So Greg, if, if there is a change and we don't return to normalcy for next year, would we have a savings in the budget? Like would we gain some money back for it? Would we lose money? Like how would that impact the budget?
So.
If we did and if we didn't.
Yeah. I mean, I think that again, we, we might see some savings. I think it's a very different, obviously a closure would be if there was a, we didn't return to normalcy in September. We're typically not heating our buildings like we were in March when we closed. So there wouldn't be some of those utility savings that we experienced. We would obviously lose some revenue in terms of preschool tuitions and kindergarten tuitions. I think that we would, we would not see a, we would not see savings in the fall as we have with a March closing. I think also the school committee would have to make some difficult decisions again in terms of looking at employees and, and, you know, thinking about furloughing and so forth. But again, there's no information in terms of what it might look like. There's a lot of projections and assumptions, but again, no definitive answers. My, my feeling is that it'll be some type of hybrid situation where we are in session and because of social distancing, you know, it'll be in session and home, you know, and remote learning and some combination.
Question, Susan?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Greg, as a follow up to that, when you're talking about remote learning and in the budget, you also talk about, you know, decrease in digital resources and technology. Right now, the students, we have loaned out technology devices for them, for this remote learning. Do we have, how many students, I mean, what are the number of students, percentage of students that have the technology? And then the second part question currently right now, and anything that we have loaned out, we come back. We know that there's going to be some wear and tear. We know that there's going to be some wear and tear. Do we have enough in this 1% budget to take care of replacing some of the devices we have loaned out that we may have to use again, just as you said, in remote learning in the fall, if possible?
So I'll let Keith Lavoy, Director of Operations, talk about kind of an estimate of the number of technology devices we've loaned. And then I'll just speak to, you know, what the financial impact might be when we collect the laptops in the month of June.
Okay, thanks.
Joan, district wide, we have about, I think it's about 1,200 devices that have been loaned out. We are working right now on a procedure of recouping those devices and then assessing where they are. Our latest estimates and talking with other districts is that we, you know, we're going to be needing to replace probably right or certainly fix about 10% of those devices. We have heard from families that have needed replacements and so we have done that exchange. And when we do, it's typically very basic things, a, you know, a hard reboot is taking care of it or a key is missing or a port isn't working. It's not like the machines are completely destroyed. So we're estimating that, but it's really going to be tough to give you a firm number on that until we actually bring the devices back in, which is going to be planned for sometime in June.
Can you keep us abreast of this, what it is? It would be just nice to note in case we get into the situation again, how to plan for our budgets, you know, we have to do it.
Yeah, Julie and I are going to have some pretty, pretty good forecast on that once we get the, get those devices returned to us.
So just through the chair, I just, Joan, to your, your question too, we are looking at the CARES Act and technology is one of the items that can be reduced, reimbursed through the CARES Act. So that is one thing, one area of funding that we're exploring. And we're fairly confident that we'll get some type of reimbursement for those devices and technology. In terms of looking ahead to next year, this 1% budget does defer the purchase of technology devices. So again, that's a concern, but again, this is a very challenging budget that we're presenting to you. And we had to make some difficult choices. And the, again, it was things over people. We can, we can spend a year without devices, but teachers and educators are essential to the work that we do.
And then Keith, as a follow up, when you said we have 1,200 devices loaned out district wide, are you talking about K to eight or?
K-12.
K-12.
That's right.
So how many, what would be a percentage of students that didn't have devices that, that maybe opt out of doing, you know, the remote learning or on technology?
So just a comment on that. So most families had technology available for their children. What we found, though, that they didn't have multiple devices. So if they had four, four children, didn't have a device for each child. So a lot of the technology that we distributed in the community of Northborough was really to meet that, that demand where there was a one to one ratio of technology devices in a household. NSborough Connect 2.0 could be moved forward in, in the homes.
So you, you could say then we had a high percentage of households that were covered where students could share the devices instead of having one per student. If you had two children, you may have only one device that was loaned out.
Yeah, so I would say that most households had, had a device that they purchased as a family and then they needed supplemental devices provided to the school to meet the demand and then S Pro Connect 2.0.
Okay. And then.
Sorry. I would just wanted to add a quick comment, Joan, which probably makes perfect sense once you hear is that what we ran into in our house was that we couldn't use the desktop because that was being used as an office by one of, one of the grownups. And then so the key is having the right number of mobile devices or laptops.
Okay, I understand.
Agree. That's what happened in our household too, you know. My husband working on his, me working on mine, kids need something too.
And that was a frequent comment that we did get from families, Joan, was that that was really the need is many of the families were working from home. The parents were home and they needed those additional devices for their students.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then I like the thing of using, you know, if we can, whatever money we get from the CARES Act is to use that. And I like the idea of us being proactive of when you recoup these devices back, looking at them. And I can understand how a key gets lost, something like that. There might be a major one. Who knows, you know, a computer or a laptop or a iPad may be coming to the end of its usage. But I'm glad that we're being proactive looking at it because it's hard to go to 1% budget knowing that we're going to have some other increases. Cause I mean, I'm still thinking, yes, we've recouped some things. We didn't have electricity that, but coming back with the kids coming back to school, you know, with this new thing, as I know even in my household, we have more hand sanitizer right now, more, you know, cleaning supplies. So I'm seeing that that is probably also going to be something that we could see in a line item. If janitorial supplies at each of the schools, that could be increasing due to this. So we're also, and here's the follow up, are, are we going to have enough money in a 1% budget to take care of that? Because I've always said in my tenure, how wonderful these schools are clean. And I'm sure that janitors are trying and they're doing their best as usual. But will we have enough in a 1% budget to give them the things that they need to keep the schools clean and sanitized?
Just a general comment. So when we do reopen in the fall in whatever fashion, there'll be some criteria that we'll have to follow in terms of cleaning protocols and procedures that are, you know, that are above and beyond what we typically would do in a normal, a normal situation. So we are anticipating an increase in cleaning supplies in some custodial time to take care of our buildings. And again, we are looking for funding at the, from the CARES Act to try to mitigate some of those offsets. You know, another conversation that we've had is that, you know, what will be the requirement of students who enter our buildings and our faculty and staff? Will they need to wear masks? Will we, will we need to provide masks to our students? What types of additional supplies and materials will our nurses need? So there's a lot of unknowns in terms of additional requirements that we could see increase some of our items, line items in our budgets. We're confident that with this 1% budget and kind of projecting out what those costs might be, that we can absorb any unanticipated costs to make sure we follow the proper protocols.
Thank you. Thank you for all the answers to my questions. I really appreciate it.
Can I just jump in quickly to, just to give an update on the CARES Act funding? So Northborough is eligible to receive $41,057 under the CARES Act. And as Greg said, those funds can be used for a variety of items that were just discussed. Cleaning supplies, PPE and computers and technology devices.
And that's just K through eight or is that 41,000 for K through 12?
Just K through eight.
And when?
Oops, sorry.
When does that money become available?
So that it's an entitlement grant, so we will need to apply for those funds and have a plan in place for that. And there are two scenarios we can apply for it going back to March 13th and will be eligible to use that, you know, throughout next fiscal year as well. Or we can apply for it just for FY21. But it will be available probably, they're saying like August, September.
So I just want to add a couple of comments to that. First, I just want to thank all the leadership team for the great work that it's done. This is not a preferred task. This is a difficult task when you start talking about programming that will impact our students and our educational professionals. It was a very thoughtful process. Again, we're very sensitive to trying to reduce the impact of people and physicians. So I just commend the work that the leadership team has done to get to this point this afternoon. And I also just want to thank, you know, John Kader, the town administrator, who is, we've worked collaboratively hand in hand and looking at what the overall impact of the COVID-19 health situation is on the town of Northborough and how to, how to mitigate some of those, those impacts, but it's been a true partnership. So just, you know, for us to move forward and not have a significant impact, collaboration is key. And lastly, just the Teachers Association. So obviously, our greatest resource for our students are our teachers and they have been outstanding partners in the work for many years. And we've tried to be, yes, transparent and open and honest in terms of what we're projecting the impact to be based on the COVID-19 health situation. And they have been very collaborative. And I just want to thank them because again, these types of budget conversations are very difficult. They're not easy and not preferred.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to move that we amend the fiscal year 21 school committee operational budget to $25,177, $177,844, which is a 1% increase over the FY20 operational budget, which is an increase of $249,286.
Seconding.
Any further discussion?
I have discussion. Should we be voting on this today? Or should we allow a breathing moment for community input? Usually when the budgets are presented, you know, we have, we have an open meeting or something before we present it. I know this is an amendment of it. I just don't want to hear complaints from community, whatever. I know it's best interest for alerting staff, alerting people for changes, but I just want to put that out there.
Do we have, do we need to do a public hearing at all between now and then? Cause if the meeting is going to be, if they haven't announced a pushed out meeting to, right now it's May 27th until we're notified otherwise. If May 27th holds, we wouldn't have much time. Is there a public hearing that we would have to have or?
Because, I mean, I think Kelly does bring up a good point, you know, it is a significant shift in the school committee voted budget. I think, I mean, obviously it's a will of the committee. I, what I don't think will change significantly is, you know, we've been asked and looking at the economic outlook to come forward with a 1% budget. I don't think that's going to change significantly, but providing public comment and input and questions. I think it never, it never hurts.
You can always feel free to email our school committee email at nsc@nsborough.k12.us, right, correct? It's also on the website. They can always email that email address with any questions they might have.
And Greg, you said there were 17 people like in the audience that were watching this meeting. Is there any questions from any of them?
So we have 29 participants in our meeting this afternoon. And I guess it'd be the will of the committee if they wanted to entertain questions.
I think it would be the will of the chair too, definitely.
Are we technically able to do that? I mean, I know there's a little Q and A button here, but I don't know how to, I'm not technically savvy enough to know how to open that up, so.
Yeah, so we could, we could take questions.
I, I feel like if there are questions, I think we should definitely hear if there are any questions since there, I mean, the people did. But also, I don't know if that cancels out the voting right now today.
Well, also, not everybody is, there's probably people that are interested in this that aren't necessarily participating at this time if they're not available and we'll watch it on video later as the, as we release them and have those available for other public members. So there is always, like I said, the opportunity to email the school committee questions as well. I think the vote, as a matter of just for the timing of it, sa, seeing that we don't have a new date announced yet for town meeting, this, I think.
I mean, I wouldn't even be opposed to voting tomorrow, like at least it's a.
We have the motion on the table. So with Robert rules, Joan made the motion, Keith made the second. Unless they withdraw, the most we can put, put it to a vote.
Okay.
That particular motion.
What, what I would add as well, if I may, is that it looks like there's almost no room to influence at this point. The 1% is something that is a context that we can't necessarily do anything about now. We could choose to not go with that, which obviously would have certain, there's certain ramifications or, or nuance to consider there. I think as both a parent and a school committee member, if there's concern about specific line items or areas under this operational budget that have been discussed as far as programming, the way it actually gets put into practice. To me, I think those would be more likely to be the questions from parents in the community than whether we should proceed with the amended budget. So just to put out there that I think the opportunity remains after voting the 1% budget to have discussion with the central office administration, Greg, whoever it may be, about the specifics of how the budget is operationalized. But I think it's important to consider that, you know, we need to make a decision sooner than later.
I, and my feeling is that I think that we still need to take the vote. It was on our agenda. I did make the motion. I am, will not withdraw it. But I think that as Greg has communicated so well with all the community members and the parents is that maybe after this vote and within the next couple of days, Greg could send out something on the one call and just enlighten all parents, you know, what it is. And if they have questions, they could contact us, the school commitment or whoever wants to answer the questions. Filter them through the chair or filter them through Greg.
Right.
And Greg, did John Kader give you a number to work with?
Did, he provided all departments a 1% budget as the target. So the direct, the direction that he provided me was again, a 1%. And I also, just a comment in terms of what the process will be. There remains a lot of unknowns, again, in the economic outlook. I do believe in, you know, I'll, I won't speak for John Kader, but I do believe there is a potential of having a follow up town meeting. And at that point, I'm looking at if there's any federal money that is going to the community of Northborough that can help mitigate some of these, these revenue shortfalls that the town is experiencing. But again, a lot of information will not be known until the fall. The governor's budget is not projected to be voted and approved until sometime in the fall. So there's just a lot of unknowns at this point. I think 1%, a 1% budget is a good place to land with what we know right now. And honestly, I think it is a best case scenario at this point, given all of what we're hearing at the state and federal level.
Yeah, because I agree, Greg, and I know that, you know, sometimes you can take a budget and you can go to the town floor and it could be voted down. So if we go with a budget that's, you know, higher or something that is not appropriate for this time, it can be amended on the town floor and then you have to, you know, at the last minute scramble and see where the, where all these cuts are going to come from. And I think that we, is it true that if we go to the 1% and let's say the climate changes miraculously and we get more money from the federal government or even from the state, can we amend? Can we, do we have to take a vote to amend the budget up or can we just vote it down? I mean, budget up and down or how is that?
This is before or after town meeting, because if it's done with town meeting, it's done, correct?
Correct.
You didn't have another town meeting.
The money is gone.
The motion would have to be made to amend the budget on the floor at town meeting. That motion can be made to increase or decrease. And we're prepared for either scenario. So if there's a motion, for example, to decrease the budget to a level funded budget, we have done that work behind the scenes to talk about what that impact would be on our educators and our students in the programming. So the, what's unique about. So the, what's unique about this year or fiscal year twenty one is the town meeting that potentially could take place in the fall. And at that point, amendments could be made to the school budgets in the fall. And again, time is, time is so important because with time, there brings greater clarity in terms of what the economic outlook will look like and if there are any revenue shortfalls.
So we don't need to, for an amended budget, we don't need to have an open meeting like we do when we vote on a budget initially?
So I mean, I think again, it, it never hurts to provide public comment and feedback. Because you've voted your school committee approved budget and you had a hearing, it would be really the will of the committee to have a, a public hearing and, and then vote the budget at a later time.
Yeah, I mean, I would motion for that, but we have a motion on the table, right?
Right, we have a motion on the table for the one percent. So why don't we go ahead with that first for that motion? Or, I'm sorry, Kelly, what were you saying about the motion you want to make?
I mean, the motion I would make was that I would recommend that we have a public, even though I support the one percent, I understand it. Just because it is a budget and we're dealing with the money, I would feel more comfortable having a public hearing about it because we are dealing with the budget. So my-
It sounds more like a scheduling thing, not a motion, but.
Well, no, my, my motion would be to not, I would put off the voting and-
Oh, yeah, we can't supersede it if it's already on the floor. A motion can't supersede another motion.
I understand that, but you were asking me what my motion would be. My motion would be to-
I meant more like your, yeah, okay.
You know what I mean? Hypothetically, my motion, if I was to motion first, my motion would have been to let's not vote today to have a, a public hearing prior to voting in the one percent. And we, and reading the budget.
Procedural than, than dealing with the budget. That's a procedural.
Correct. It is a procedural issue.
But I think that if, if Greg can't, oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
No, go ahead.
I think, Greg, would that be possible to send out via an email, the one call, and just state the action that we had? And if anybody had any comments between you and Sue, you could decide who they would go to?
I mean, I think that, so everything that you're discussing is an option. So obviously, it would be the will of the committee to, to vote this amended budget. I absolutely regardless can communicate, you know, information to the community around the fiscal year twenty one budget. It's also possible to have a public hearing and then, you know, we're, we'd have to turn it around fairly quickly. But it is possible to have a public hearing and then, and then have a meeting to vote the budget at a later time. So all the things are feasible from a timing perspective. It's just the will of the committee in terms of how it would like to move forward.
Right. Well, if there's no further discussion, we still have the motion on the table from Joan to accept the budget now and Keith seconded. So I would like to just go forward with that. And as Greg said, if there's a public hearing after that, if there's any public feedback that might change people's opinions or whatever later date that you want, if you want to revisit and revise it again at a later date after this. As you said, time is of the essence. Things are changing all the time. This is what we're going to have on the table now. If that changes in two weeks or after people are notified, or if anything else comes up, we want to bring it back and look at another revision on top of this or whatever, how that's going to work, that.
So just to, just in terms of a process, so my recommendation is that if Joan amends her motion or takes her motion off the table, and it is the will of the committee to have a public hearing, that, that the budget not be voted this evening or this afternoon, that we, you know, we send out a communication to the community. Here's the superintendent's recommended amended budget for fiscal year twenty one. We schedule a meeting for next week. We hold the public hearing. And then at that time, the school committee would vote the budget. So that is one, that is one pathway the school committee could take to get this, this budget voted. And again, I think in terms of timing, I, I honestly don't think my recommendations in the work that this, the principals and the district leaders have done is going to change what we'll present to you. It would give us some context of what some of the concerns of the community are moving forward. But I don't think it would ultimately change the presentation and our recommendation.
So if you have, so Greg, you're saying to delay this, don't take the vote. And to have a public hearing next week. And would the public hearing be through a Zoom meeting?
Correct.
And then what happens if you get ten people? I mean, we do public hearings and we don't have a large participation. What happens if you get ten people or any number of participants that say they want you to not lower certain line item, but they want you to increase it and they want you to increase it? And then as we're doing the Zoom meeting, would you be amending the budget? And then coming up with another percentage, maybe it might be, might be one point two, it could go up to one point five. And then are we going to vote on it that night? Or we're going to have the public hearing? And then do it on one night? Are you going to have the public hearing, listen to their remarks, and then go back to the drawing board?
No, so I think it's, I think that just in terms of process. So if you were to vote the, the budget this evening or this afternoon, and then you had a public hearing, that would, that's just, in terms of process and procedure, it's just not in alignment with what I, what I would recommend in terms of, if you're going to have a public hearing, you want to hear from the community prior to voting the budget. Again, I don't think the public comment is going to change my recommendation to you. However, and I would not make a recommendation to amend the budget at a public hearing meeting. However, it, what it would provide is some insight into some of the concerns that the community might have. So again, it's just more information. We, I would, you know, I would not make a recommenda- recommendation to amend the amended, recommended budget.
Well, yeah, because that's what I was going to say.
So pretty much we have presented in front of us a good, solid, concrete plan. And we should be able to make a decision based on what's presented in front of us today, on what we want to do as a committee to present to the town. So I would feel, I would feel fine with going forward with the vote today.
And based on what Greg just said, I still think we can still get public opinion and know what it is. I think all of us are involved in the community. And I think that even though it may be a one percent budget now, if we get any money coming in, I can name about five areas where I would like to see more money going into. We could go, just look at the three point two. Based on what Greg just said, I would like to, and Sue said, I would like to proceed with my motion and I'm not going to withdraw.
Sounds good. Let me still, Keith is a second. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this motion by Joan to accept the one percent budget amended for FY twenty one as Joan had motioned. All right, roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Okay, Susan, yes. So it is four yeses, one no, the motion passes.
So just a comment through the chair that I still think that a communication around our budget as Joan had recommended is important to our community. And we still can solicit questions around the budget and what impacts it will have. Again, that will give the school committee some good data and, and understanding what the concerns are as we move into the town meeting, whenever that might be.
That sounds like a good plan. Did we have anything further on the agenda to come before the committee today? I think that was the only thing we had.
I believe that is it.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Great. Second, okay. Joan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Susan, yes. All right. Thank you so much for this meeting today and have a good evening.